I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at 7 o'clock PM on Monday, July 15th. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Andrew. And we'll do a quick roll call vote, a roll call?
Andrew Allward.
Matthew Mealy.
Richard Raul.
Jennifer Gill.
Joseph Baker.
And Peter Cruz is our town administrator. He's gonna join us. We have executive session first and then return to open meeting. And he'll join us at that time. However, I do see a lot of people here for the appointment of Sharon Shalinski. So I don't want to make them sit here through our executive session.
No.
So why don't we jump to that? And we can do that first. And if you all want to leave, you're more than welcome to stay, but...
Andrew will bring iced coffees for all of us. Because Jerry was supposed to bring them, but didn't.
You didn't get them?
I didn't. I've been waiting.
Andrew said he was gonna be given to you.
Just right under the bus, Andrew, that one.
Right under the bus. Yeah. That's him in his favorite, that's why.
But, so why don't we do that first? So in your packets, we have an email from Pat Finn. And then I got, you should have an email from Sharon Shalinski herself, who would like to be appointed to a member of the COA. So I don't know if anyone wants to come up to the table. Sharon, if you want to come up to the table. And then anybody else? So Pat, tell them, Pat, if you're appropriate, Diane or Sandra.
I got Pat.
You drew the short straw, Pat.
That's okay.
So I read both emails. I guess the only thing I want to say is when I've been at events at the Senior Center, I always see Sharon there helping out. So I think she would be a good fit for the COA. So I don't really have any questions, just because I've been, I don't know, maybe half a dozen events, she's always been there helping out.
So I have a question. I actually have a question. It's more of a procedural question. So the last time we went through this, COA had to vote first as a recommendation, and then you came in here. So I assume that's been done?
Yes.
Yes, as of our meeting in June 2018.
Whatever, 18th or 20th, our last regularly scheduled meeting, yes. She came before us. We asked our own questions. And yep, we pushed her forward.
Yeah, I'll speak to Sharon's character as well. She's one of the most, I've gotten to know her the last seven years or so. One of the most selfless people I've ever met. I have been to a couple of those events, those events at the Senior Center. She's always there helping out, taking pictures. She does the same thing at the schools. She takes pictures for the students and the teachers. She's, she's, she was born for this. She's perfect for it.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for Sharon?
I'll have a comment.
Yes, please.
So, since I've been on the board the past, what, three and a half years? Again, Sharon, I didn't really know Sharon, but she started showing up and she was taking photographs. And then sending them to me. And then just a little over a year ago, we started our new Facebook page. And she's been so instrumental in that and the photographing that she's an administrator of that page now. That way, we skip the middleman, which is me, and she can go ahead and post everything that she puts on. She's also, she's already helped with a couple of programs, like the dog toys, putting it together. She's got all kinds of connections. She's not shy to ask for things. And she's a worker, which is, we really, we need that, you know? We need some fresh ideas. We need, we need some hands-on in the Council on Aging. Because right now, before Sharon, I think our average age is 75. Not that age has anything to do with it. But, you know, when you get to 75, some people can do more things than other. And it'd be really nice to have somebody with that much energy and ambition. And she loves the seniors and the seniors love them, love her, so.
Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Sharon Shalinski. I hope I didn't butcher that too bad. To Council on Aging for the term ending 6/30 of '25.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion? Seeing no call for the vote. Andrew?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Aye. Joseph?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are you gonna hug everybody?
So now...
It's okay. No hugs necessary. I'm a little sweaty. It's a little warm in here.
No. His game, I was cool, but now I am getting warm. Okay, so now we're gonna enter executive session. So if, you can stay if you want. No, we're gonna go in the other room. So you're all welcome to stay if you want to. But I understand if you're like, don't know how long it's gonna be, then you might go. That's why I did it first, so you could all... You're welcome. Alright, so I will move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law, C 30A, Section 21AC, to discuss strategy relative to litigation, Garden Wonders, where a discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, returning to open meeting. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. In discussion? Alright, so you have a roll call vote. Andrew Allward?
Aye.
Matthew Mealy?
Aye.
Richard Brumness?
Aye.
Jennifer Gill is aye, and Joseph Baker?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, we'll be back. Alright, so we are back in regular session at 8:23. So I'm gonna take New Business out of order, just because we have representatives from Garden Wonders. So we're gonna go New Business 5G. And we have an update from our executive session. It's just three points, Isaac. So first, we've agreed on a path forward regarding our proposed settlement and a host community agreement. And our attorney will be reaching out to discuss that with you and your clients. And we've empowered Peter to act as our agent on negotiations to keep things moving forward. Because our goal is to have this wrapped up in September, by our second meeting in September, if we can. And we're very motivated to move this along quickly, and we hope that you are as well. So I think regarding... So I think regarding the issue, the discussions with Garden Wonders, that's the two main points. And then one thing that did, that was brought to our attention is that Boston has embraced a licensing path regarding their host community agreements. And instead of doing host community agreements, they do a licensing model. And that might be something that we want to explore. And that ties in nicely with our discussion of a business development committee. Because we could look at maybe implementing other licenses for businesses across Millville, which would generate a revenue stream and we would, you know, we'd keep it reasonable. But we also want to make sure that we're looking at opportunities to increase revenues for Millville. Because as you all know, we had a over $400,000 deficit in our budget. And so, and we need to look to creative ways to close that. So, so those are basically the three main points, Isaac. So pretty, I'm, thank you for waiting so long just to hear those kind of short statements, but that's really about it.
Okay, so Nicole, the Towns Council, will be reaching out to me about next steps for the HCA and settlement agreement?
Yes.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that you need me at this meeting for?
No, I think that's it.
Alright, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, Isaac.
Okay. So New Business, now we're going back up to the top. B, VSO agent stipend considerations with Art Campbell. And Peter, Art did not attend the meeting. I don't know if we want to table this then for our meeting, where he's in the future, or if you have anything you wanted to bring to the attention?
No, I have nothing for tonight's meeting then, if he's not here. And I would ask that we'll defer to another meeting when he's available.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, and next is consideration of appointment of Joseph Fitzpatrick as special municipal employee. And there's information on our packets. Peter had some back and forth with our attorneys. So Peter, do you want to review that?
Sure, so I just wanted to double check on the, you know, procurement laws applicable to this type of thing. And really, it's called Chapter 7C. I know we had talked about Chapter 30B procurement, but it doesn't apply in this situation. It treats a project manager-type person as if they were an engineer on a building project. And so, under the procurement laws of Chapter 7C, the project has to go out to bid, if you will. If the cost of the project manager or engineer exceeds $30,000 and the project exceeds $300,000, we anticipate neither of those, so it need not go out for any procurement requirements. And we, you'll see in front of you, the request to be appointed as a special municipal employee, which is, you know, something the town has done in the past, as I might have mentioned, with our highway surveyor on plowing and so forth. And you'll see that the rate for the additional work as the, helping to manage the project of the old town hall repair and reuse is at a lower rate than you had last seen, and it will be done through the payroll system. So it's even more advantageous to the town and more timely. And also say that even in spite of this, you know, not getting to this point quite yet, the activities related to the project have continued. You know, we've had our inspections for lead and asbestos and so forth. We've engaged a firm to remove a small section of asbestos-laden tile. They have to do it a certain way. The lead is still being evaluated, but it's been done in numerous locations throughout the building. Our engineer is into his third design effort, which is at a even lesser scope of repair of the roof structure as he's looked at it even closer. So we're into, we're waiting on the third set of evaluation of that, which in my view, the third set, it's not very expensive for this engineer, number one. And number two, what we're getting is reducing the scope of the structural repairs needed by, you know, as designed by a professional engineer. So I think it's all advantageous from a cost perspective for the town.
Okay. So while I didn't have any issues appointing Joe before, but I know other people did. So just now that we've had the attorneys review this, like, I think this is a good opportunity for Millville because Joe has been looking at the town hall kind of since he started. That was one of his very early things, is he did a walk-through with Peter, I think, on the town hall, just to evaluate it and look at what's going on. And I know that there's, you know, I don't know how much stuff we put in social media, but there is chatter, like gee, they've been talking about revamping the town hall forever and how much progress has really been made. You know, everyone talks about things, but when put, getting pen to paper and getting these things to actually happen has not happened. So... Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Joseph Fitzpatrick as a special municipal employee. Peter, what should the term be? Through the end of the project?
Yes.
Through the end of the town hall project, so that it is refurbished and available for use. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion?
Just quickly, well, so in the event that the project, like, isn't complete with the, just to end, the appointment just end upon, like, the project following through, I don't think it will.
Yeah.
But I'm just trying to think of some...
Well, we can always amend our motion and be like, we're dissolving the project in the special municipal employee. So we can always do that.
Alright, cool.
Yeah. We have a plan, there's a Plan B. Where I'm hoping we never use it, but there is a Plan B. Andrew, did you have something else?
Yeah, kind of along those lines, but, so we're making the person, not the position, none of the positions, special employees, right?
Correct.
How come, why wouldn't we? Like, if the project management manager is the special and that has a specific time zone or timeline, why wouldn't we make that, like, let's say, couple years down the road? Hopefully, it doesn't take that long, but if it does,
Yeah.
and we get a new building inspector because the current one retired or whatever, that we would have to go through the whole process again. If we did the position, we would, could avoid that and also just have it. And that way, it's not specific to a person.
Okay, so should I, I will amend my motion and appoint the position of building commissioner. Should I make it building commissioner slash building inspector?
Well, building commissioner is the permanent position. The acting project manager is the temporary, that way it has the timeline.
Okay, so Peter, so should I amend to acting project manager, or how should I? So it's the position as a special municipal employee?
I, I, I don't know if that's the right way to go, frankly. I think I'd rather you did the person.
Okay.
That's what you've done in the past there. It's the person you're making a special municipal employee so that that employee can serve in multiple roles, you know, for a small town like Millville. So that's, that's what allows you to let these people, since it's hard to draw on multiple people for multiple tasks. You're dealing with, you know, a person wearing two hats. So again, as, as your highway surveyor, it's Brian, is the one who fills out the forms that's supplied to the, you know, town clerk. It would be Joe in this situation, who has to put some, you know, fill out a form and it's recorded with the town clerk that he's been appointed by you. He's the one who has applied for the status to where, to do these, in this case, dual roles for the town. In the case of Brian, he has three roles. He's your highway surveyor, he's the manager of the plowing process, and on occasion, through his company, he was approved as a special municipal employee to provide plowing services. So I don't want to confuse the issues with Brian, that's all been done. But again, he had to file these forms, and I think the town clerk, she sent me an email on what all that would be.
So I have a question, Peter, about this. So how many hours a week was, is Joe?
He was 19 and a half hours a week.
And that was done because there was a cap and a concern of benefits?
Yes, and he's a full-time employee with another community, so the benefits aren't an issue for the town of Millville.
So what happens in the event that he begins working 25, 30 hours a week? I mean, what are the ramifications to his retirement and our obligation to him as an employee?
I think that's why we're doing the special municipal employee, so it's another separate role.
It is, but the employer is one entity. It's the town of Millville.
Well, so, yes.
You can't artificially divide a position.
He may exceed 25 hours, I'd say he may exceed 20 hours. That's the trigger for what's called permanent part-time status and allows one to tap into the benefits of the community.
And he become, and at that point, he becomes obligated to contribute to the Worcester County retirement? And not to the part-time?
Yeah, he's contributing now, but he's not, he's not able to tap into our health benefits, for example. And so what we have separately is a form that I would have him sign. It says, "I'm getting benefits elsewhere. I'm not gonna use the, you know, the benefits of the town."
You want to refine that question?
No.
Because you know where I'm going with this.
Yeah, I know where you're going.
So, well, Peter just mentioned he signs a waiver. He doesn't take advantage. Because he's getting, he works somewhere else full-time and gets those benefits.
I don't think that's legal. I don't think we can ask somebody to work here.
Again, the form has been drafted by council.
Yeah.
Well, I know, but...
No, but you can do that, because that's happened to other communities, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, in other communities that I've worked in, Peter, the situations have come up where overtime has arisen and, you know, retirement obligations have occurred. And the towns had to stop this practice because it became problemsome. So, I mean, I can't tell you exactly what it was in detail that occurred, but I know there were issues.
But where we've already had council review this twice.
A point I was gonna bring up with this, similar along that, is that other towns, one town in particular I know of, had that situation where they had a employee who was under the 19 hour, 19 and a half hours. They made them a, they gave them more hours, basically. I think it was close to full-time or something. They signed the waiver saying they wouldn't take it. Once they got the job, then they took the benefits.
Right.
And there wasn't anything that, because you have to offer them healthcare if they're, if they don't have it.
They're legally obligated.
But if he already has healthcare and everything, so...
Yeah.
So...
Or if he leaves the position, retires.
It puts the town on a liability, whether, no matter what his intent is.
So if that happens, we can, we can take a vote to remove him as special municipal employee?
And then get sued?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we'll get sued. That's how you get sued.
Yeah, so I, I don't know. I, you know, I think that there's exposure in every employee you hire at all times. I don't think there's much exposure here, and I think the benefit's far away that exposure. I appreciate that there can be exposure, but as I say, he's fully employed in another community. Will this increase the town's obligation for pension benefits? Yes, commensurate with the amount of money earned in a particular period, but...
Our old PEB is very well-funded, so I'm not worried about that. But, and I'm also not worried about Joe.
We kept track of it, though.
Yeah.
Right.
So I'm, I'm not worried about Joe pulling the fast one.
It's not being, you know, it's not about being worried, it's about doing what is, I guess, ethical in the best interest of the town. I mean, I, he may be willing to bend the rules, but I, you know, it doesn't mean we can take advantage of it.
So we're not bending the rules. He's waving.
We fully fleshed them out.
He's waving it, right.
And I think what's in the best interest of the town is to have someone who's been around the town hall for two years and can keep this project moving forward versus then we're gonna have to hire someone, this is two months away. There's already discussion of like, why isn't this getting done? We just talked about how things take so long in municipalities, so do we want...
So how many hours are you gonna give him a week? Are we putting a ceiling on that, a cap?
Are we putting a cap on his weekly hours? It was in the letter, actually.
No, there's a cap on the total hours, dollars, total dollars for the life of the project. And the project is, as you know, in ARPA, you know, we have devoted ARPA funds to this. So we have to commit those ARPA funds by the end of this calendar year and spend them, you know, the subsequent two years. So we're, we're up against it. But it's, you know, it's not to exceed as requested and as you would approve, if you approve, $30,000 over the life of the project. But it's not so many hours a week. It could be sporadic, depending on what's going on.
It might have some, but, so what, the way it breaks down with that, he would have 600 hours. But it also doesn't say that it's at the life of the town hall project.
That's your motion that you're doing.
Yeah, we just motioned it.
That the position is a special employee position, not that it's capped at $30,000 for the life of the project?
I can amend my motion and cap it at $30,000.
Is that, how would that work, though?
We make motions all, it works because it's a motion.
What I'm saying, like practically, like, you're gonna stretch $30,000 over the life of the project?
Yep.
How long is the project gonna be?
Like a year, I'm hoping, one more year.
How many hours?
How, yeah, 600 hours for a year is more or less reasonable. But if it's not, which I highly doubt, or I highly suspect it will be, also, how many hours, I mean, do we reasonably know how many hours this will be expected to use?
We don't. We don't know what the, you know, this project is evolving, has continued to evolve. And you have an opportunity for someone highly experienced, already deeply involved in this thing, to...
To get this off the ground and finally get it moving, finally.
You know, he's gonna be acting project manager of the Old Town Repair and Use Project at $50 per hour, not to exceed $30,000. That's an additional role beyond his being a building commissioner at the 19 and a half hours per week as specified there. So that's, that's the opportunity in front of you. And the alternatives are...
Is to start over and to find someone else.
So not to exceed 20.5 hours weekly? That we're thinking, Peter? Not to exceed 20.5 hours weekly?
I don't know why you would say that.
Because then it puts the employee into overtime.
It's 20 hours is the, is the cutoff, so that's why he's at 19 and a half.
Right.
He doesn't get to 20.
So he's gonna sign the waiver, but you want to, you want to cap your special municipal project employee not to work more than 20.5 hours weekly? Because that would bring him to a total of 40 hours. Remember, the town of Millville is the one employer. You can't artificially split an employee to circumvent overtime requirements and things that need, so...
Okay, that's fair. I guess I hear what you're saying. I see. So in addition to his 19 and a half, you don't want him to hit, you don't want him to be on 40 hours a week total.
Right.
Yeah, I get you. Yeah, I get you.
So I can amend my motion to make sure he doesn't work more than 20.5 hours and is capped at $30,000 lifetime spend.
And one more question, Peter. So he's going to be submitting a time sheet, and you're going to be approving this on a weekly basis? Is that how this works?
Bi-weekly, yes.
So he'll be submitting a separate time sheet as a special employee?
Yes, as the acting project manager on the project, yes.
Okay, so it'll be two time sheets. Alright, that was my question.
Yep.
One last question. So, because before, we were talking about him possibly using a company he was related to. That's not here anymore. Is that off the table at this point, or?
That is off the table at this point, yes. Because it just confuses things, and we have no idea whether he would do that. So this simplifies things. I think it's responsive to many of your prior concerns. And the goal is to, you know, keep him rolling on this project without too much interruption. So we're not gonna use his firm.
So categorically, we're not gonna use the, his firm?
Well, I can't say that. I'll just say that anything else that's done will follow proper procurement laws. So if his firm bids on some section of this, for example, because it has to be done in procurement, we'll follow those rules.
Can you ask Joe to submit an ethics opinion? So that, or yourself, so that the town can cover itself from liability if he intends to submit bids on any part of this project? You can submit an email to the Ethics Commission asking for a legal opinion.
Yes, yeah, so we can get them to weigh in, should his company, yes, absolutely.
The other thing, though, is that as a special municipal employee, you have less regulations when you're that, when it comes to ethics, because you're doing multiple roles.
I think that he should still submit an email, or somebody should still...
But I'm saying, like, so that's a concern.
But, but every employee, just like yourselves, are subject to the ethics rules and the training and all of that.
But they're different rules. So when you're just a regular employee, they're more stringent versus when you're a special municipal employee.
Right.
There's more leniency for them because of that position. Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, he, he really should just submit an email asking for an opinion. Because that'll, that'll actually protect him and the town.
I will just say, it's just that, I mean, they have a lot of persuasive authority, but ethics opinion letters aren't binding. But I know that if there's any kind of situation that would arise, they would, you know, probably defer to it. But it's just a point I'd like to make, just for knowledge.
Yeah, it's, it's not bulletproof, but at least offers, you know, proof of due diligence.
We were being, we were trying to be ahead of the, out of everything, so, yeah.
Who would be the one who would be analyzing the bids for certain parts of the project?
Me. I'm your chief procurement officer.
Okay.
So I was gonna amend my motions with the things we discussed. Do you want me to also amend it that, to have him do an email to the legal, the ethics, what was it again?
Mass State Ethics Commission, I think, yeah. I mean, he can be directed by Peter to do that.
Yeah, sure, but, so we can do them, but I'm happy to add it to the motion, too, so it's like...
I didn't think we needed to, but...
Okay, well, let me amend the other, the two things that we did agree to. So I will make a motion. I will amend my motion to appoint Joseph Fitzpatrick as special municipal employee for the life of the town hall project, amending it to cap his work at 20.5 hours weekly and to cap the spend at $30,000 over the life of the project. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there anything else, or did we get every, everything? This is actually a good discussion. I'm glad, like, that was helpful for me. Right, seeing no further comments or questions, I will call for the vote. Andrew?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Aye, Joseph?
Aye.
Okay.
See, we're getting it done, Joe.
I know, because it's like...
Good job.
Because I feel your pain, like, things move so slow. And I will say whenever, and I always use Brian Malley, it's like, God, things move so slow. And he's like, you know, Jen, look at other towns, and it's true. It's, this is not a Millville problem, this is a...
It's universal.
It's a universal issue, but this is one of the things we could do to like, move it along just a little faster.
But you have to ask the questions, that's the problem, you know?
Yeah, no, you do, you do.
Do our due diligence, but also it's a good thing, because this, you know, allows us, it's a good political thing. And it shows that we're working on other things besides, you know?
Water.
MES water, yeah.
Are you recommending that we spray some shovels in gold and go out there and dig?
So we are actually working on something else besides MES water and the town hall. So moving on to 5D, earmark for the police department playground replacement. The earmark for the police department playground replacement was approved to purchase playground equipment. And Kevin is moving along on this, Kevin Kevin Delgizzi, so those are the two things that I know, Peter, anything else?
No, that's all, that's, and just that was all this was about, is just to let you know that the state, you know, I went back to the state to get their approval that. Previously, we had, so we had obtained their approval for the fifty grand earmark to. Either put in a garden or a basketball court, I went back, asked them if we could also switch that to a. Playground, replacing the playground with a playground, and they came back with approval, so that's all good, and Kevin Delgizzi, he's already got one good quote and. Good drawings of what he really likes, uh, we're soliciting a couple of more quotes on the. The materials and he's getting some in-kind services at the same time, so we're, you know, he's moving along, he's a racehorse.
So Peter, I I do have to give you a small update on this, um. In my copious amounts of free time and walking around town, I came across some Millville youth. And I I did inquire whether they would appreciate a playground or a basketball court more, and they opted for the playground.
There you go.
Right from the people.
Right from the children, the children would would appreciate a playground, so.
Well, they'll name it after, they'll put all five of your names on the playground, they'll name it after all five of you, because you're the ones who made the call on that.
Might have to make a line item for graffiti.
I know. I can only imagine what people would write on that sign.
Can we get a statue of me in my shirt, possibly in the playground?
Holding a chicken. Holding a chicken.
A non-binary chicken?
Well, there might be a bird, you know what, on it if we uh, do that, so I don't know.
So, cause I'm trying, if you still have executive session, so moving along, so five E, end of year transfer, so everyone has a paper?
From the town accountant?
Yep. So I guess review it, if there's anything we need to discuss, if not, I'm just gonna make the motion, read them all, and then we can hit it and prove it. Peter, do you want everyone to sign my copy and I'll leave it on your desk?
Yes, that's fine.
Alright.
Is Claudette in the audience, by the way?
No, everybody left.
Okay, understood.
Cause, yeah.
My only concern with this end of year transfer sheet that I'm looking at right now is. I remember several conversations that the board has had that we weren't gonna be spending any more money on MES water, and that is the first line in this. MES water.
Well, we have to spend the money, though. Do you know I'm gonna fix it?
Oh, I do, I do, but I ju- I didn't think we were spending anymore, that's what I was.
So we went over by a little bit, so I know, cause I've heard people say, like, how much did this cost? And so I don't know what they, over the last year, what we spent, I'm gonna guess, uh, I'm gonna guess a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand, probably.
On just water?
On just, on just, well, the consultants, the equipment, the everything else. But I guess if anyone's complaining about that, did you not want us to fix it? Because the impression I got from the surveys, which I will send to Peter, send to all of you. Is people wanted us to fix the water.
Oh, no, I certainly want us to fix it, but I just thought it was strange where we said we weren't gonna be spending anymore, that that's the first line in the transfer, that's all.
So I think, I guess the one thing to know with transfer, end of year transfers is. We approve the budget, but there are little things that creep up, but we can do these. Yeah, that we can do transfers like this, cause that, and we do have these funds available, which is good, so this didn't impact the overall budget, so I'll know.
And fiscal year twenty four, it appears as we kinda over budgeted for tri-county tuition. We're defunding tri-county, Joe, that's it, it's done.
Yeah, so just for the record, there's, you, in the budget, there's a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars budgeted for MES water, it's coming in. Twelve hundred bucks more than that, cause the end of the year bills came in from the, you know, water operator, so that's what you're. And you budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand for FY twenty five.
Yeah, and we spent, you just said one fifty for twenty four?
One fifteen, two hundred.
Oh, one fifteen, two hundred, wow.
No, because the other part of it, some of the equipment uh, came out of your ARPA funds that you had previously approved.
Yeah, what's up with the the fire transfer, is he at nine grand just for vehicle maintenance and repair?
That happens.
Yes.
That hap- there was one year where we went way, way over, like fifty thousand dollars over, because the equipment's older. But it's, we spent nine thousand to fix it, or a million dollars to buy something new.
That, and I think that the only place they can get to fix it is like in Connecticut or somewhere, so just the transportation for that, just. Um, I did have one question on the, uh, in our packet, we got this thing, these uh, this email from you to the. Uh, town accountant, under the first line, it says, are there any changes you can reclass from one department to another? On the small dollar overages to avoid year-end transfers? Is that in line with municipal finance?
So, to the extent some things could be reclassed, that are, you know, arguably one department or another, that, that. You know, there weren't any, but uh, sometimes you can see that, you know, they put something into. You know, uh, I'll just say town hall expenses that should have been, or. Board of Health expenses that should have been town hall expenses, things like that, so we didn't find anything like that, or she didn't.
Okay, cause, yeah, cause I'm just concerned, cause I know in like, private sector, the, you can do that pretty easily. But with the town, it's, the amounts for each department are set at the town meeting, so do transferring money in between different account.
I'll I'll just tell you, so for example, in in this year's, you know, some things that you could reclass, like she charged. Uh, the town administrator dues and memberships, some dues that truly belong to the Board of Selectmen. It wasn't worth moving that around, so you guys turn back all of your budget and I I turn back some amount of my budget. So it's just things like that, it's. So, you know, are they accounted for in the right account code, or is there a judgment that you could put at one place or the other, it's that sort of thing? Um, postage, you know, we have postage for all departments, it's captured into one line item. We have some budgets, it's generally captured into one line item, but we have some budgeted amounts in some other departments, that sort of thing.
With the first one, so are the Board of Selectmen's memberships were put towards which account?
It just went, they they put it into the town administrator dues and memberships. There's an MMA fee for you guys that wound up going into uh, town administrator department.
Not gonna lie, I'm actually really concerned, that's misappropriation of funding, you're putting it in the wrong department.
Yeah, I.
That's, that's.
We should probably fix that, Peter. So I guess.
Yeah, okay, that's not gonna change anything as far, as far as what you have to do.
So fair, so fair, I I agree with that, but I think it's similar to the discussion we're gonna have on I. Um, that we need to make sure it's accurate, yeah, I agree with Andrew. I agree.
I mean, if that was an audit thing, and I was auditing, that would be a huge ding right there, cause that's. Yeah, it's little amounts, but that goes to the practice of how the department and how the administration of. The financial situation at Millville is handled.
So Peter, is that someone just puts it to the wrong line item, like, when it comes in for a bill, and so we just need to make sure. Just need to make sure you put it to the right line item.
Well, it also looks like it's also encouraged from this own letter. That's, that's the real concern, it's not like somebody's making a clerical mistake, it's that it's in black and whites, encouraged, yeah. That's, that's a major issue.
So we should not be encouraging that either, so I think that maybe we wanna, we talk about appropriation by department. That, that's, these two things are related.
That's the whole point of urine transfers, even if it's something as silly as like five cents.
Hundred thirty bucks, like, that's not a lot of money, but we wanna, yeah. And I don't mind reading forty of these, like, I would rather have it accurate.
Well, it's legal.
Yes, I wanted to make sure we do things legal, and I don't, I don't mean to say this is. It, this feels more important, though, the accuracy of the budget, because our budget is so constrained and we are always like. We're always fighting a deficit, so I wanna make sure we have everything in the right places, so when we do need to go back and cut something. We're cut, we're cutting accurately. That's, so I don't know if that's, I guess I would put that on an equal footing with the legal perspective, for us. It's so important to have it accurate, because we're, our budget is so.
Yeah.
Tight, and I don't, I wouldn't wanna go and cut someone, they're like, oh. You cut that, cause no one spent it, but really, it was coming out of this other.
It it can cause a lot of confusion.
Yes.
Especially when you have a department up there and then.
Yeah.
Oops, something's changed.
Yes. Okay, makes sense. So I'm gonna read these, any concerns? So I will make a motion that we execute the following year-end transfers. So you will cover twelve hundred dollars of MES water from twelve hundred dollars of tri-county tuition. We will cover a hundred and thirty dollars of building other expenses from a hundred and thirty dollars of tri-county tuition. Board of Health, we will cover one thousand dollars of Board of Health dues and memberships. Um, from one thousand of recreational properties slash grounds. We will cover one thousand in Board of Health stipends from one thousand of recreation property grounds. We will cover nine thousand dollars in fire, vehicle repair and maintenance from nine thousand dollars of tri-county transportation. We will cover thirty five hundred dollars of fire telecommunications, and we pull fi- thirty five hundred dollars from tri-county transportation. We will cover two thousand dollars of fire medical supplies and take two thousand dollars from tri-county transportation. We will cover five hundred dollars fire admin office supplies and take five hundred dollars from tri-county transportation. And we will take five hundred dollars for highway vehicle repair and maintenance and cover that with five hundred dollars from tri-county tuition. For a total of eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion or questions?
Just wanted to mention here, on the transferring outlines, transportation is spelt wrong each individual time. I don't know if that's.
Transimportation.
I don't know if that's a big deal, but just wanted to mention it. Gotcha.
They can't spell.
Makes sense.
Alright, thanks, Joe. Um, alright, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, Andrew?
Hi.
Matthew?
Hi.
Richard?
Hi.
Hi, Joseph?
Hi.
Alright, alright, oh, did you write on yours?
I did not, you can write on it.
Thank you, so we all need to sign this. And I'll leave this on Peter's desk.
Fun times.
Yeah, alright.
Had my none.
Peter, I didn't see any additional annual appointments in my packet, did I miss it?
Uh, it should be in there, but I would defer, it's only four of them, and everybody's in holdover status, and there's still a bunch. Of folks that were still, that are still being chased down, so you can defer that to your next meeting.
Okay, cause I saw this on, from the fire department, like FYI on his appointments, did I miss, oh.
Right, he's a strong chief, he does that, right?
Yeah, to be appointed. Oh, these last four, is it the Cultural Council, CMRPC?
Yes. So you could do those.
Okay.
Three years ended.
Pamela Maloney is a volunteer for the ages.
Yeah, and it's Colleen Curis, it's spelled wrong there. Cable access.
Yep, okay. Alright, cause it was just.
So it's just those four, if you wanna do those tonight, you wait.
Any, do they would have any objections with appointing these four? Okay, they're all different.
So you could do two for the three-year term, which are both Pam Maloney, and the other two are for a one-year term.
But they're different committees, so I think we need to do.
What about, uh, we were waiting on Peter Murray from the police department.
So do we hear anything on Peter Murray from the police department?
There's been nothing further on that appointment yet.
Okay. Alright, I'll just do them really quick, so we can rattle them off, or Andrew, did you wanna do?
I was gonna do it.
Yeah, sure, please.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to appro- uh, appoint Pamela Maloney to a three-year term. Uh, as a member of the Cultural Council, I'll also appoint her as a three-year term to, as an alternate member to the CMRPC.
Alright, second?
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Andrew?
Hi.
Matthew?
Hi.
Richard?
Hi.
Hi, Joseph?
Hi.
Alright, congratulations, Pam.
And then I'll make a motion to uh, appoint uh, for one year, Colleen Curis as a member of the Cable Access Committee. And uh, Roy Leard Junior as a one-year appointment as the Director of the Emergency Management.
Question?
Well, let's get a second and then discussion.
Well, no, no, this is, this impacts that, we have an emergency management board here, don't we?
Do we have an emergency management board?
Do we have a board, Peter?
We have a committee, yes.
So then they would decide who, who is the director?
You, in fact, why don't you table that, cause I'm looking at this first, you know, saw it today. You you have an employment contract with him where he is the MEMA director. I'm not sure if that's the same thing or what that is, so why don't you hold on that one?
I'll run my mo- uh, a motion to just have uh, co- uh, appoint a Colleen Curis as a one-year term. As a member of the Cable Access Committee.
Would like to second?
Second.
Thank you, Matthew, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Andrew?
Hi.
Matthew?
Hi.
Richard?
Hi.
Hi, Joseph?
Hi.
Alright, alright, sorry, I'm, I was looking at this list and I was like, this looks exactly the same. Alright, so. Back to our agenda, personal appointments, um, garden wonders we discussed. Um, Business Development Committee, so we were gonna push this off, but since we did have some ideas around licensing. I guess maybe the only update would be that part of the Business Development Committee would be to put together. To evaluate a business licensing structure to potentially generate additional revenues, and Richard, you know, you were. Animated about this, so if you wanted to add any other detail, or did I hit it?
No, I think you hit it pretty well, I think there should be some oversight and recommendations to the back, to the Board of Selectmen. In terms of um, maybe creating some licensing structure and standardized procedures. Um, especially as we look uh, towards business growth here in our community, capturing those fees, I think is important, and standardizing the fee structure. So.
Okay.
I, I think that maybe one member of the board should probably participate with this.
Counter to this, would it make more sense to have uh, employees? Do the, so for instance, like, the building inspectors, one who has a lot of fees on it. Um, planning department, probably like the town planner might have also more knowledge on like the structure, so would that make more sense to? Have them kind of develop it, cause they'd have more of an expertise as to the structuring of licensing and fees?
Well, fire department has fees too, but I think this is more for operating a commercial business in the town. Cause I mean, you can, you can have permits for other things, but I think this is, this is more geared towards conducting commerce in our town.
I'm just wondering.
Care businesses, gas stations, and that nature.
I'm just wondering if it would make more sense to have people with more expertise onto legality of how to str- structure it?
So.
So you're nominating Matthew, is what I'm hearing?
So in terms of structuring it, I mean, you know, I didn't really touch upon this, but I mean, I I I was just recommending that one member of the board be on there, but. Certainly a couple of members in the community, I mean, businesses could be on it. And we could be three seats, it could be five seats, I I'm I'm not sure, I'm open to ideas. So you're right, but I didn't get that far, so.
I I'm, I'm just wondering if the, how effective a committee would be.
I think we can try, like, put together a proposal, that's why I think what might make sense for our path forward is. Matthew, from the legal perspective, and Richard, because you seem to know, maybe you two could collaborate on a one-page overview. And then we can discuss at the next meeting and then see who we think would be fit for that, and maybe really start to get this off the ground, cause I feel like we've also been. Discussing this a little bit as well, that's kind of. What would that be, something you two would be amenable to working on? It wouldn't be a quorum, there'd only be two of you.
So, I, here's what I'm thinking, I don't mind weighing in, providing material, uh, I could be like, uh, you know, kind of. An expert, just kinda give some material, I think Joe might be.
Okay.
Might have more time, he likes to seem to kinda get his hands.
So do you wanna make a list of bullet points and then give it to Peter, and then Peter can give it to Joe and Matthew?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not throwing you under the bus, I mean, I, but I would recommend. Yeah, cause I mean, I mean, Matthew. Well, yeah, I mean, if you're willing to do it, I just, I know you and I are in the Green Committee, we got the Public Safety Committee, I got the.
Well, I thought. So I wasn't discriminating against Joe, I was thinking you two put together one, one-page plan, and that would be executed by whoever. But if Joe wants to, I have no, I don't, whoever wants to run with it.
I'm happy to provide material, and I think Joe could be the point person.
Okay, that works.
Cause the other thing is, if Joe has a little bit of time, he could probably uh, do more research.
Joe has a lot of bit of time.
Wait, before our next meeting, you could have a one-pager on what, like. I know, I just heard that, I'm like, that kinda scared me, I'm like.
That's weird.
Maybe like goals and objectives, what the committee looks like, you know, what success looks like, and then, like, just a one-page overview, not anything too crazy. For the next meeting, which is August, we, it's on here.
How long do you think of appointing this board, or creating this board for?
I don't know, I mean, maybe Joe can make a recommendation on that. How long we should have the board or committee, the business development committee, should it be, should we have it forever, should we have it for three years, five years, ten years? I think that would be.
Maybe do a three-year trial, see if it works and then maybe take it from there.
Yeah, see what, yeah, the reas- see if other town, maybe look, see if other towns have done this and how they, and if they've done, has it been a trial? If they'd had it long, if they had, just had a one-year plan. Like what the output is, is a business strategy plan for the town is the output and then other. There's a lot of different ways and I.
I think it's a good start though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can do that.
Awesome. Okay. Alright, so we just had a little bit of this on the last meeting, but I wanna make sure we had as agenda items, so. Discussion of ATM appropriation by departmental versus salaries and other expenses, so. And when we approve our town meeting budget and you're all there, like, we only do it by the total for department. And at a meeting that I was at, the library specifically said, so you've approved the total, so we can move money around within our budget to different line items, and we said yes. So, if we want to make sure salaries are approved, we would have to basically. So we'll be doubling the lines that we're reviewing at the town meeting from the budget, which I don't mind doing to do it right. But that's what it would really take, is we would have like fire department salaries, maybe fire department part-time salaries. And then, would we have the chief's salary separate too? Cause we don't want them, cause if we didn't, if we didn't, if we don't do each line item specifically. And we just say full-time salaries and part-time salaries, then the chief could say like. I mean, I don't know if the, if the, I don't think the chief would do this, but he could be like, I'm gonna take fifteen, I know I'm only supposed to have ten. I'll make it fifteen.
Even though he has a contract?
Well, I'll worry, so not, that was.
I'm just asking, I, I don't.
Well, I don't know, if he can do that.
He's a strong chief, right?
Yeah, so maybe, I don't know, but I mean, so then we, so we'd have to do like fire, like. Chief salaries, like highway surveyor salaries, and then other full-time salaries and other part-time salaries.
I'm confused as to why we would have to do that.
Because if we don't, then they can move money around within the.
There's laws in place that set that.
So we have said.
It doesn't really matter what people say, it's the state law, that's what dictates that.
Of cross-funding.
Yeah, and that how you pay employees.
So have we been wrong telling people that, yeah, you can.
I think it was maybe a thing on clarity and how people interpret it. You can move stuff from office supplies to postage within your department, that's totally fine. You can't put it from postage and give yourself a bit bonus, that's how that works. So that's where I think the, the interpretation by departments may be confused. But there are laws dictating how you compensate people.
I would, I would need for, further clarification, I thought you could do that, but what you can't do is you can't pull from the fire department and go to the police department.
No, you can't do that.
Expenditure buckets, but if you ran, if you ran short on labor dollars, could you pull from office supplies? I, I thought you could.
Because we vote, and, and the other thing is, is we vote on the salaries when we vote out, we don't label it. But they're set within the budget at what they are.
But because we vote on the total, they can move what they want. So I think, so I think, well, since we're confused, I think Peter, could you take an action to talk with town council? And say, hey, we've been approving it this way, does that mean they can move stuff around? Or is Andrew right? And you, like, once we've approved salaries, is it this way? So I think, cause we need to clarify that to all the departments. Cause I thought it was, you approve the total line item and you can.
Within that expenditure.
Within that, within that bucket, you can do what you want.
Right, you could move within that expenditure bucket.
So like, the police department, if we approve, like, it's around eight hundred thousand dollars and they can be like. And do whatever they want.
They could do some slight adjustments.
I mean, if that's the case, then the, a de- department head could literally just put a bunch of money towards them. Yeah, that's not.
Well, we're, so we are banking on them being honest, is what we're.
No, because there's state laws on how, because like, when you look up, you can look up any state of or local official's salary, that's a public information. They can't change it, just even if they're a department head or something, on their own whim, because they have the money in their department.
I don't think the department head can do it, I think it can be done, but not the department head level.
What level then?
I think that would be our level, right? If there's a shortfall on, on an expenditure line, we'd have to do a transfer?
I mean.
So if you, it, just, just if I could, you, yes, your town meeting, you vote on the total. You present to all voters the line item details and occasionally you get questions from voters. Regarding some of those line items, but the total is what's approved, department total. Separately, there are multiple layers of control in place, and I think that's your major concern. Uh, regarding, you know, pay structures and people going out with more money than they're authorized. And so for example, some people are under contracts, you also have union contracts and then separately. You know, the, the rest of the folks are subject to, y- you know, you approve a percent increase. We call it a coal increase, or you can use any other name for it. And so every year, you know, those people are subject to a form that the treasurer prepares. And I sign off on, that they get their three percent raise or two percent raise or whatever it is. That the, you know, the, the finance committee and you all have approved as far as those types of increases. As far as somebody like, I think the places where you could see some things differ, line items, but they're compensation related. Are related to, you know, um, the police department and the fire department, but that's more a function of activity. You know, hours served and at, at union rates or at rates that are approved based on. What is provided to, you know, a part-time firefighter, EMT, those sorts of things. And then separately, you have Quinn, that's a direct percentage function of what the pay rates are. So there's not, like, people are moving things around. To, because they are taken out of the, you know, supplies budget as one might suggest, but.
So I think we need.
Yeah, I seen other towns, like I used to live in Sherburne and we, we did salaries and then we did other expenses. Or all other expenses as separate votes at town meeting. I've seen other towns who do all the line items and it's an interminable process. That, um, I don't know it serves anybody well.
I would prefer not to do each individual line item, I think there's, I think where we might go is to how you mentioned how they did in Sherburne. But I think the real thing, the net of this discussion is. We have different opinions on what, how this moves forward and we just need to consult with council and find out what's, what it actually is. Okay, anything else on that or you're good with the path forward? Alright, so old business, MES water, status update and discussion of related items, if any. Um, so we have two quarters of compliance under our belts. I know Peter went to the school committee to give them an update. And Peter mentioned it went well and there were no questions, but I will defer, pass it over to Peter and see if there's anything else he wanted to add around his discussion.
Well, it is riveting, uh, TV, if folks wanted to watch the video, it starts at four and a half minutes of their last school committee meeting. But I did update them with the facts of where we were. Um, there were no questions, I think it was, I also, you know, referred to your vote that you all had taken to provide bottled water. Through the first ha- uh, through December thirty-first and upon request through the end of the school year. With assuming students were in the building, um, and, uh, but basically took off. The excuse that the water being unsafe as a factor for not having the students there. That, that, that argument is a moot point at this stage. I, I did present them with, uh, you know, the data of the test results for each, uh, month. And the last, uh, basically since January of twenty twenty-three. You know, we talked about, uh, the event, as I've referred to it on numerous occasions that happened when. You know, the pr- prior prior operator wasn't putting the right amount of chlorine in, killed the green sand filters and there was a. A pump widget that failed and that brown water broke through, and so as a result, the green sand media was replaced. And to jumpstart, it took a lot of chlorine and that skewed the results for a couple of months. That skewed the compliance because of the annual averaging based on, you know, quarterly averages. It's a cockamamie math, but it works. Um, we did just get in Friday night, uh, test results for July. And the halocetic acids did exceed the MCL of sixty parts per billion. It came in about ninety parts per billion. The operator, uh, McClure Engineering is working on, uh, explanation of what might have happened and. You know, what other issues might be involved, I don't have that yet, but that doesn't put us out of compliance again because of the. Take a big number to put us out of compliance. We'll, we'll be in compliance the third quarter and as I mentioned to the school and as provided to you folks in the past. Mary Jude Pigsley had committed to three quarters of compliance to lift the bottled water ban, even though you voted to provide it.
And I guess the other thing, so the mailing that we all worked on and, uh, you, we approved. So, um, I sent that to Dan Keefe to review and I have not received any comments, I don't think. Um, and then it was shared with Dr. DeFalco and so he said he wasn't comfortable sending it as is to the school community, so I'm gonna reach out to him. And see like, uh, and I'm happy to send him the word document, like, just use track changes, so I can see what you want to change. But I think that that's a, you know, a good update that we need to get out to parents, so they understand. The water situation, cause we can't, you know, we post things on our website, I post things on my fa- my selectmen's page on Facebook. But not everyone's on Facebook and, or you know, knows who I am, or you know, like, they don't. So, all those things, so we, but I think we need to make sure we're sharing. Information to the community that's, would be impacted by this. Anything else? Okay, Peter, anything from departments?
No.
Any announcements?
Uh, no.
Public forum? Think we're good? Um, correspondence, one seventy-nine Thayer project. Peter, you wanna give a?
So I just put that in there, we got delivered, um, a notification to a butters regarding. Um, Thayer, Thayer Street LLC is doing a, seeking to construct a seventeen-unit multifamily residential development. On the thirty-one acre parcel of vacant land at one seventy-nine Thayer Street. That parcel is the one, you know, we had the Kokoli matter for a number of years. Who was the former owner, he lost it, uh, he defaulted on his loan on the property. Uh, was taken back by the lenders and apparently there's a new developer. So what you have is the notice of intent with the conservation commission and I guess there is. Uh, planning board, there have been, there has been, or there will be certainly planning board meetings regarding this project as it progresses. Uh, one of the advisors to the group that, uh, the LLC group, uh, the developer. Is, uh, a former, um, senior planner, Jack. Uh, who served with us and he disclosed that he was involved with them. He's no longer serving under the IMA as a senior planner for anybody. Um, so I don't know where this is gonna go, but it's certainly evolving. It went from, went under the Kokoli project, it was, I don't know, twenty-something. Single-family home spread throughout thirty-one acres. What I've seen so far is, uh, seventeen units that are, some are attached, so it sounds like it's, uh. You know, more like condos or some sort of thing or townhouses.
So Peter, can I give a quick overview, cause I did attend that conservation commission? And I, I just wanna bring a few points to the board, if you don't mind. So, so I attended this in high level, this is basically going to be seventeen condo units of. Couple bedrooms apiece and there'll be approximately thirty-four parking spaces paved and it'll be part of an association. So the building will go up, they're looking to occupy roughly, I think it's fifty percent of the land. Fifty percent will be deeded, um, as conservation only. Oh, sorry, open space, and so you, you, you attended. The problem I have with this is where the potential drainage and, um. Well, the drainage is, is where they're looking to dump it is, is actually, I think, within relative proximity to the school's wells, so. That's a, that's a, I'm painting this with a wide brush, there may be expert opinions that may differ. But looking at the layout, I, I'm uncomfortable with, with where everything is pitched and how it's all going to be drained towards the school. So, it appears to be within proximity of our wells, which could change and could alter all of the hard work that the town has now done. With regards to cleaning up our water, so. I'm not a happy camera, by the way, I don't like associations, but association is going to run the entire thing. And these are going to be condos, double units, I still have concerns with police access, fire access. And I, I don't understand also how they're going to drill wells, they're going to provide water. But they're not going to need to meet the state's criteria of a public water supply, they'll be able to provide water to those residents. And even though given within close proximity, we have a water supply that the town has been critical of, so. Um, the whole thing is, is, um, is concerning to me, in my opinion, I, I don't like it, but.
So my only concern, cause I live near the school and near this project, was I just wanna make sure we, there was enough water for everybody. So like, an analogy that Peter is like, so you have a cup of water and you have two straws and now you add four more straws. Like, so, now maybe there's plenty of water and that's my concern is, like, wrong, um. But I just, I just don't know, and they actually in the meeting, cause I, I did ask this question of the development team and they said, you know, we'll see what we can do for research for that. To make sure there's enough water, and it's interesting you talk about public water supply, cause I didn't even think about that, but their configuration is to have like. A single well, correct, servicing, or like not, there's not a well, it's not a well per unit, so there's seventeen units? There's not a well per unit, it was like, it was a lower number, a couple of wells. To serve them and so, and public water supply, as we all know, is twenty-five people, so if it serves.
So this is seventeen condo units with two bedrooms apiece?
Yeah, so say that's, it's gotta be at least, I mean, it could be some single, like, a part, one person buys one, but assume two people, so thirty-four people. So unless, if they drill two wells and that's seventeen.
You have kids in the household.
Yeah, so that's seventeen per, that assumes that it's two people per, if it goes more than two people per, like. Like you said, that's a married couple with a baby or a child or two.
At thirty-four parking spaces, all paved, but the way that the drainage is, it's, um, you know, have some catch basins, but it basically dumps into the ground.
Another major concern is the fact that you mentioned the fifty, uh, fifty percent of the current acres would be deeded to the conservation committee, right?
Well, it, it will be restricted, so it's going to be, my understanding, I, I may be ti- talking out of, out of term, but what I got from this is this thing is going to be. Given and turned over to an association, condo association will have full oversight of this. And fifty percent will be deeded as open space, and one of my questions was, is well, what happens if the association comes back to the town? And then, um, tries to go for a change or a variance to the open space and then now wants to expand its footprint. Um, that, that wasn't quite clear to me, it's possible, but.
So, so the, but they would keep, maintain the ownership of that land, right? Cause that was a concern, cause if, if the town got it, then that's obviously a whole other.
That was an option, actually.
That's something I would not be in favor of, cause.
Walking paths, things of that.
Especially if it's hard access, if somebody goes on there, injures themselves, something happens, we're liable.
And it goes back to the point of, you know, we haven't even sat down with police and fire yet, um. Fire exits, ease of access, and what happens when we gets injured out there, can we get them?
I think that was one of the concerns before was the. Uh, fire suppression units, like, to get it up to that point for however many units or houses they had up there.
You know, do we have a lot of truck that'll reach? I mean, probably, but in the event that it goes down, are we gonna rely on mutual aid? There's so many questions that we can ask, i- it is going to be a drain on public services to some degree. Um, you know, we'll have yet to see what that is, but, but, but again, if you were to look at the layout. All of the runoff is gonna get funneled towards the quarter, the corner of the property where it's closest to the school.
I'd say it might be beneficial to look at why the project the first time failed. Cause it's probably gonna be the same reasons this time, if not, different, slightly different, but.
Anything else on the Thayer project communication? Minutes, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. I will say that I found the font to be bigger, is it me or?
However, it costs more money to print.
That's true. An extra four cents page.
So I did not finish reading them, unfortunately, but I did notice one thing on the second page. Um, under, uh, Chair Portperson Gill. Just one L, yeah, so, that's what I noticed so far, but. Just one L, yeah, so, that's what I noticed so far, but.
Okay, so you wanna wait to review these?
Up to you, I mean.
Oh, further down, two more Ls in bold.
That's right, right, G I L L?
Yeah.
That's my heart, that's how you spell my name.
So where's your, oh.
No, the first one.
Right here.
Oh, one L there, oh, okay, I was looking up here, I was gonna say, is it two Ls or one L, okay, disregard.
Alright, why don't we table it? Okay. Um, selector reports, so we have continuation and formation of goals discussion. So I think what I might do is, cause this is kind of the thing that I've been asking for, is I'll write a memo on goals, so the three that I have. Was, um, here it is, town hall. Um, getting an override on the ballot for a vote, I'm not saying if I'll pass up, I think we should ask the question. Because we are facing a, a big deficit and I just, I don't know how else to close the gap. And then the third thing will be related to Joe's memo on business development committee, cause I think we'll be talking about that too. So I'm just gonna put together like a, like for each of those, a summary we can review, add other things we want. Did anyone else have any other goals that you think we should add for this year?
I'm still working on getting the town more involved and active in the, the politics of the town, so I'm still.
Increase participation?
Communication.
Yeah, increasing, I mean, increasing participation kinda thing.
That's a good one, Joe, I'll put that on there, um, and then we can have a discussion on like what each of those, like how, what they look like. Okay.
We're not doing a national layout this year?
No one's asked me about it and since it's in like four weeks typically, I would say no. But I will do a follow-up, I wanna do a follow-up.
I'm not, I'm not volunteering.
We also had the library day, right, you had the, which was a touch of truck event and that.
Yeah, June twenty-nine thirty.
Police on the June, yeah.
Sorry, keep going, um, okay, uh, I have other things for selecting reports, but I don't know if anyone else wants to go?
Well, I.
Yes, please, Andrew.
One thing I might add as a goal is, uh, financial knowledge and understanding and controls. Um, cause it seems like there's.
Based on what just happened tonight?
Yeah, I'd say that might be something to go over, yeah, to kind of like update everybody on, you know, what the MGLs are and how those operate.
I've been kinda thinking, not that I wanna cut you, I've been kinda thinking about how this board is structured and how it touches other boards. Why don't we do like a tracking sheet with all of our projects and boards? And then assign a selectman to, to, you know, each board to come back with some sort of information. To try to keep boards on track with our goals.
Like a lead selectmen per project and per board and slash committee?
Yeah.
So I don't know that we can do that with, with all boards and committees, but we should maybe have some priorities, like I think finance committee is probably a priority. School committee is probably a priority, I'm on capital planning, so that's, we're good there, there might be others.
There might be a few others we're missing, but why not formalize it into like a formal hierarchy? Where somebody has a point person where they come in back with information, kinda like a feedback loop when you're looking at an operational flow. You know, just try to keep people on track with our goals.
Yeah, that might actually be something we put in our handbook or something eventually, that we, yeah, okay, that's a great idea.
And if we do a tracking sheet, we can follow through with them, nothing comes off the tracking sheet until we've reached a resolution. So things don't fall off an agenda.
Yeah, no, it's good.
Also create a limit.
Right.
Keep how many things we're looking at at the same.
Right, we don't want more than like, you know, but if we keep a spreadsheet and everybody has assignments to come back with updates. I think it puts pressures on boards to kinda come through.
That's what I'm saying, like, once you see the things, you can kind of key, say, okay, maybe we should hold this thing off for.
Right.
Till we get something else off.
Priority, yeah. Oh, that sounds good.
But if we bring it here and we, we, we incorporate with the agenda, I think it might transition smoothly.
Okay. Anything else on goals, yeah, please?
The other thing, um, if we could have the, um, mainly to do with the year-end tra- transfers and that whole issue. If we could that have that on the next agenda, cause I think we should probably have some more discussion on that and possible. You know, a memo or something should be sent out to make sure it's very clear how those work.
Okay, so would you want? An ex, a draft explanation of like what your entrances are and how we typically do them and then for us to add additional commentary to that?
Yeah, kind of like reference like where it's in the law, reference it from that and then kind of so everybody's.
Okay.
Everybody's clear.
Okay. Anything else on goals objectives? Okay, do you have anything else on selection reports? Joe, I'll go to you, cause you're always last.
Uh, nope, I don't have anything.
Matthew?
No.
Richard?
Nothing very exciting.
Okay, so I had a couple, um, things just because I was on social media over the weekend, so someone was asking about. You know, when are we gonna pay Thayer Street? So I don't know if anyone looked at the budget, but we actually don't have any monies assigned for road repairs, like significant road repairs. Uh, it's chapter ninety, I believe, that we save and then we use. So to be honest, this is one of the things that we discussed in an override, is this put about a hundred thousand dollars every year. Which will get you about like a Chestnut Hill, uh, sorry, old Chestnut Hill Road, not Chestnut Hill Road, old, big difference in length. A old Chestnut Hill Road paved roughly, rough and tough numbers. So if we did that and then maybe like one year we paved a road like that and the next year we save it along with chapter ninety and the next year. So then maybe like every other year we're doing a major project and on off years we're doing smaller things. But just so you know, like that's how, that like it's expensive and we don't build it into the budget right now.
So thought, cause I had kinda thought about this during the conservation committee meeting in Thayer Street. Is, do we have the authority to kind of bake in a proposal with regards to approving this project? Where maybe the developer helps cover some funding of that street, because it's going to impact that street.
Of course.
So why wouldn't we bake in paving that street as part of the development?
Okay.
It's usually not something that big.
Or part of it.
Yeah, cause I know with, um, there was the last agreement with, I think it was like Afonso way in that area. And it was, um, providing the, what they had negotiated, which was a bit shady, cause they did it after everything was already done, but. Uh, was, uh, include the, um, curb for the, for Central Street. Or a portion of it, I don't think it was the whole thing, but it was like a portion of it.
I was thinking if it's gonna be within proximity of the school and it's going to impact the school, why not look at a sidewalk?
Yeah, I mean, that's something.
Cause that would help ease transportation costs too.
Yeah.
That would be usually, I think that's usually done or, um, baked into the deal with the, uh, planning department, when they are doing that process.
And that's, and during my early proposal, that's where we would have one selectman reach out.
Planning, yeah, yeah, okay, alright, so it was one thing I saw on social media, second thing I saw on social media, cause someone asked me to call someone. And I did it today, um, but then they said, good luck, she still hasn't answered my question on a streetlight on Grove Street. So just to reiterate, all streetlights have been turned on in Millville. There was apparently a street light on a particular pole in the eighties that has been since removed. We are not adding streetlights and although it did have a light on there forty years ago. It doesn't today, so that's in, in addition, so I have answered this question, I think. A couple of times, so I'll, and I'll answer it again, um, so you may not like that answer and I get that, but that's the answer, we're not adding streetlights.
But is the resident, but the residents are, they have the ability to pay for the installation of a light and the service that they so choose?
I believe that they do actually.
So if that resident, if that resident would like that pole, then they are free to pay for it.
Okay. If I can find the comment, I will let them know.
Or maybe several neighbors wanna chip in because maybe it's a group concern.
Yeah.
I think they, they would have to contact National Grid, but I don't know if they put up a new light.
I can, I have a guy, I know, I have a guy, and I shouldn't say, I don't have a guy, it's our guy. And I, and I've been emailing him on other things and I can ask him that question, so I'll definitely check, thank you, Richard, that's a good point. And then the last thing is, I've noticed that Joe was very active on social media and I appreciate that you trying to do that and. Richard had comments before about us having a town Facebook page and you were wondering about someone having time. To manage social media and engage with the community and I thought that might be some. I know we're good, like we didn't even Joe from not giving you anything and today we're giving you everything.
Giving you everything.
But we might, I thought we could add that as an agenda item for a social media, like Boris selection, social media person.
So, uh, yeah, we should have a formal social media position, um, or liaison. And somebody that could manage maybe a page on our behalf.
Yeah, okay.
Rather than us relying on privately owned pages for, uh, what seems to be biased information.
No.
Never, right?
Never on social media, okay.
Fake news.
So that's all I had, so, um, and I do understand that some people don't like the answers to those questions, but those are just the answers.
The answers.
Those are the answers, I don't know how to.
So would you be willing to create the page and then be a moderator for it?
Uh, yeah, I could try, I, I'm not very good with the technology stuff, but once I get into it, I'm fine.
So then I guess my next question for Peter is legally, can he create a page on behalf of the town of Millville and then be a moderator?
So I, I think what we could do is we could make an email that's like social media at millvilleMA dot O R G. And Joe has access to it, so then, and you know, not that Joe would ever move on from me on the Boris selection Millville, I'm sure he'll be here forever and ever.
Of course.
But like, let's say, but that way it's a, that way it's a generic email, so when someone, we can switch it around and you just give that, so I think we could do something like that.
Mm-hmm.
And have them create a page, but then, but was that what you were looking for?
Well, originally my thought was to have a town employee actually try to follow, uh, you know, HR protocols and, um. You know, help, I guess, manage the flow of information, um, next to Peter. Um, maybe this would work, but I was thinking, uh, you know, somebody here in the town hall managing, that was my original thought, so.
Yeah. Well, let's see how it goes on a volunteer, cause we can always take down the page, like if we could try this and it doesn't work and Joe's like, look, I can't do this.
The town in theory already has people doing this for the police and fire. Not in an official capacity, we haven't really appointed them.
And they police people, police.
We haven't stopped them.
Okay.
And sometimes things get put on there that probably shouldn't get put on there.
Okay, so I think this, we should maybe have a social media plan.
Right.
Discussion for at upcoming meeting.
I believe, I don't know if it was fully put through, but I believe there was at one point. Back when this, I believe about five years ago or so, um, there was a pro, issue with social media at that point for some reason or other. Uh, I think. Maybe something to really.
So you can collaborate, so for example, we would have, so on the town page, Joe would be the voice, none of us would post there.
Well, yeah, no, that's, but the, um, I think there was a policy that might have been crafted, I think it was either. Almost fully drafted or was fully drafted, I think it's in the handbook. Um, I think, and also we might wanna look into, before we start expanding to make sure like we have some sort of structure. As to what people say, how they, who's on it, like that stuff, before we keep, you know, getting more social media.
Cause again, we don't wanna be deleting messages and have people feel.
Yeah, and we wanna make sure that if we're saying something, it's not just off the cuff either, you know, we wanna make sure we control the man, message.
It's an official message, that's, uh, public information.
Yeah, so we might wanna make into like not just policy, but also maybe even a bylaw change or something.
Okay.
To kinda make it more formal.
Okay.
That makes sense.
But you also might wanna review, you have BOS policies on social media.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll dig out the personnel policy sections that we have on that.
Cause I think there's one for the Boris Selectman, but I haven't read it in a minute, so.
Okay.
Forget it.
So maybe this is something I could maybe just like put a list together of. Concerns that we might have before we throw up a page like this.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, you're not doing this today.
And then we could put it on an agenda, put it on a future agenda.
This will be on the next agenda.
How about a standard operating procedure, Joe, where information comes in, information is either kicked out. Or put on and then a procedure that says you will reply to these topics. You know, these things, you know, no profanity, uh, no opinion.
You can also turn off commenting on all your posts too.
So, yeah, so maybe, maybe, would you mind throwing like a straw man together of like a standard operating procedure? Cause we're gonna do these things.
And then in, and in the selectman handbook, there's something there too.
Yeah, I'll still look in, I'll have to look at that again, I haven't looked at it since April, so.
Okay, so those are my three things that I had and so I'm gonna move on, we're gonna be here very late. Um, town administrator report, Peter?
Uh, just two things, um, the invitation for bid package is going out for the salt shed, uh.
Yay.
So we'll see where that gets us. And separately, I think I sent you some materials, met a comic. We engaged, uh, an interim executive director there. For a period of time, uh, and in that we hired Bill Keegan, the former town manager of Foxborough. Who was also the chair of the board of SEMREC for five years. So he'll be instrumental in evaluating, uh, some of the management, management efforts and procedures that happen at MECC. As well as, uh, assist in any conversations that will continue with SEMREC regarding a merger, okay?
Okay. Items not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to meeting?
Nope, I have nothing.
Okay, our next meeting is Monday, August twelfth. And for expediency purposes, I'm just gonna read these executive session motions. Um, so I will move that the board of selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law C thirty A, section twenty-one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect in the bargaining or litigating position of the town and the. Chair so declares firefighters, teamsters, union, local, one seventy. Additionally, I move that the board of selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law C thirty A, twenty-one A three. To discuss strategy relate, relative to litigation, including but not limited to Totoma V Town of Millville. Where a discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. Returning to open meeting only to adjourn, looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion?
I hope not.
No, we can't.
Oh.
So seeing, I mean, you can, but we're still going. Seeing that I'm gonna do a roll call vote, Andrew Alward?
Aye.
Matthew Maile?
Aye.
Richard Brumless?
Aye.
Jennifer Gillis, aye, Joseph Baker?
Aye.
Alright, we enter executive session, we're gonna set the time, nine forty-three.